I'd like to call the meeting into order. If you would stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Present.
Trustee Gett?
Present.
Trustee Kazam?
Present.
Trustee Marfel? Trustee Wigington?
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Present.
All right. We have a couple of trustees on the phone. I just wanted to clarify for the minutes that you still believe that it's prudent to not require personal attendance due to the ongoing COVID.
Yes, that's my opinion. Thank you, counsel. We would be at item four, which is approval of the minutes from the Board of Trustees meeting on March 15th, 2022. It asks for a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Are there any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item five, I did have a plaque to present to trustee Marfel. Hopefully, he'll show up in a little bit. If not, I'll make sure that he gets the plaque for his service. We'd be at comments from the audience. If there's anyone tonight that would like to comment, make a comment to the board, please come forward to the podium and give your name and address, and keep your remarks under five minutes. Anyone here tonight to address the board? Going once, going twice. Comments from the audience are closed. We'll move right on to...
One second, Mayor.
Yes.
I'm sure I've got a fine-lined flag code, but I left the American flag down on the desk.
Oh, thank you, trustee Weisenberg. Thank you. I've done that before myself. Thank you. Okay, as you know, the presentation of the plaque was due to a resignation by trustee Marfel. Item seven is the appointment of Mark Goff as village trustee to fill the vacancy of trustee Dave Marfel. And I know Mark doesn't need any introduction, but if I may read into the record a short bio on Mark. Mark Goff is a lifelong resident of Peoria Heights, whose family was in the Heights since there was a Heights. He attended Peoria Heights High School, where he was a member of the first four-year graduating class in 1975. Now 64, Mark retired from the village in 2019 after 42 years in the public works department. He has been very active in the community, serving for 12 years on the District 325 School Board, in addition to being scout master of Peoria Heights Troop 21 and a youth football, baseball, and volleyball coach. Mark and his wife of 42 years, Margaret, reside at 5124 North Montclair Avenue. They are the parents of two adult sons, Scott and Greg, and the grandparents of Amelia and Caleb. Mark says his public works experience could be an asset to the village board, particularly given the current view of the Heights Water Department and its needs. It's tough for a small community to keep their feet under them and keep the budget under control, he said. The village is on track financially, and I hope we can continue that. We have a lot of opportunities in front of us. I would ask for a motion to approve this vacancy.
I'd say moved to approve that vacancy.
Second.
All right. Before we get into any discussion, counsel, would you explain that trustee Marfel was elected to a four-year term and what we're doing here and what's going to have to happen?
Correct. So because it was a four-year term, the appointment that you're making to fill the vacancy is only going to be until the next municipal election, at which the position is open to complete the balance of the four years. So I think the next election is going to be April of '23. That will be an open trustee slot in April of '23. Whoever's elected serves to fill out the balance of the remainder of the term until '25.
And somewhat related, so in the next election, three trustees will be up for election, and also this vacancy for a two-year term.
Exactly. This vacancy will be specified on the ballot as serving out the remainder of the unexpired term, you know, of trustee Marfel.
Thank you very much.
So the voters will know that they're voting on a two-year, a partial term as opposed to a full four-year term.
Thanks for explaining that. Any questions for counsel and any discussion on the motion?
I'd like to make a couple of comments if I could.
You may.
Yes, I would like to thank Dave Marfel for his service. He's been a big part of the village for a long time. I wish him well in the future, and I would also like to say Mark Goff is a perfect replacement. I worked with him for 16 years. I still reach out to him on a weekly basis for help, and that guy knows what's going on with the village.
Thank you. I hope you'll be working with him again. Anyone else?
Yeah, just a quick comment. I remember attending Mark's retirement party, and I was sad to see him go, and I'm happy to see him back. So thanks for continuing to serve, Mark.
Thank you, trustee Weisenberg. Anyone else? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Wigington?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Congratulations, Mr. Goff. Look forward to having you up here. Counsel, so another quick explanation, since trustee Marfel's resignation stated that he was going to retire on a date, resign on a date specific, which is in the future, at the next meeting, it's my intention to then formally swear in Mark Goff. Is that...
That's correct. That's correct. So I think it was the 22nd is the effective date of your resignation. You can swear him in at the next meeting. That'll be after the 22nd.
Yeah, and if there was any type of an emergency or we needed a trustee sworn in for whatever reason, I would do that early, but I don't expect to do that until the night of the next meeting, and we'll swear him in right after the call to order. All right, thank you. We would be at old business. Any old business come before the board? Hearing none, let's get right into new business. The first is approval of the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget for the village of Peoria Heights and the Peoria Heights Public Library. Trustee DeVore would ask for a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget.
In a second, please.
Second.
All right, trustee DeVore, I know we've done this many times, but would you give a quick highlight of what we're doing here, please?
Absolutely. So we have been through the budget several times, and in front of you, you have the final copy of the budget, and then underneath it, you do have what the library presented to us in our last meeting. I would like to thank Chief Sutton and Stephanie and everybody who's worked really hard on this. They put a lot of work into it, and it's exciting to see that we continue to have a balanced budget and continue to be able to put money towards things that we need in the village.
Thank you. Are there any questions for trustee DeVore or discussion on the motion? Anything you want to add?
No.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Wigington?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is approval of ordinance 2022-1673, an ordinance amending Title I, Chapter 6, Section 2 of the Village Code of the Village of Peoria Heights for the purpose of modifying the meeting schedule and authorizing remote electronic attendance. Trustee DeVore, I'd ask for a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-1673.
In a second, please.
Second.
Second.
Okay, go ahead, trustee DeVore, please.
So this is modifying our current ordinance by changing first the time of our regular meetings from 6:00 to 5:30. It is also taking our meetings from three meetings a month to two meetings a month since we've had to cancel a few due to not having enough on the agenda. And then it is also to extend or allow trustees to be able to attend a meeting electronically if they fall under several requirements that are listed in this ordinance and have voting rights during that meeting.
Thank you. If I may give an explanation before I open it up for discussion, I know at least one of you has a piece of this that you'd like to talk about. First of all, this couldn't work if I didn't have a board. The administrator and myself have a board of trustees who are fully engaged in the process here. I'm very proud to serve with you because each one of you shows up prepared. We don't start from square one. When we meet, you've already read the packet. You've already met sometimes with me. You've met with the administrator. You've met with the department heads, and each one of you, as chairs of committees, really are doing an outstanding job of overseeing your scope of work within the village government. So both Dustin and I talked about this, and Dustin and Sarah have talked about it, and we were canceling quite a few meetings, and I just felt that this would, this could work. It can't work if we ever get to the point where people again aren't devoting the time. So that's part of the reason, and we're always able to go back and revisit this and make changes in the future if it's adopted tonight. So the remote piece also was added simply because a lot of you do travel, and at one time, I was very much against this, not here, but on another board, on the Peoria County Board, when this was brought to the county for remote participation. But again, I think it depends upon the people sitting around the desk here, and so it's something that we're going to have to monitor, and if I ever thought that there was a person sitting at home abusing this, then I'd be the first to bring it back to you, but I wanted to set that up for you, and appreciate you letting me have my comments on that. So trustee Weisenberg, I know you have a difference of opinion, but go right ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. I rise today to oppose the approval of ordinance 22-1673. This ordinance moves to reduce our meetings from three meetings a month to two. I do not oppose that change. However, this ordinance does more than just reduce meetings. It normalizes remote attendance. I understand and accept that the pandemic presented this governing body with some challenges that were met with allowing officials to join remotely to mitigate any risks from the pandemic. Remote attendance was required during the height of the pandemic to ensure that we continued business as usual. So I respect and accept that fact. This ordinance and action by the board is different. This ordinance normalizes remote attendance forever. Citizens didn't elect us to not be here, and I do not believe the citizens expect to come to meetings to engage their elected officials, to find their officials are not here due to other business. We have these meetings to handle the people's business. Our action today governs not just this board, but future boards as well. And I do have a few questions, if I can, for counsel. I understand that Public Act 101-0640 permitted public bodies to conduct remote meetings under certain conditions, but they were only allowed when a disaster declaration had been issued by the governor or the director of the Illinois Department of Public Health. Under normal circumstances, are public officials allowed to remote end meetings and cast votes?
So the language in the ordinance, in Section 2 of the ordinance, mirrors the Open Meetings Act. This has always been, I shouldn't say always, this has been in the Open Meetings Act as long as I can remember, before anybody knew what COVID was or any pandemic. The difference is, the Open Meetings Act allows, permits a village or municipality to adopt remote attendance. It doesn't require it, and remote attendance is only allowed if the municipality specifically adopts it, and the Open Meetings Act does put these limitations on it. Limitations being a forum has to be physically present at the meeting, so if you don't have four elected officials here in this room, you can't have a meeting where three or four people are absent and electronic to call in. And then it is limited to, you have to be absent due to an actual illness or disability, you're traveling for business, or an emergency, a bona fide family or personal emergency, and then it's up to the board to decide, so it's a bona fide emergency. So there is this provision that anytime somebody requests to participate remotely, any one of the board members can object, and it requires two-thirds of the people that are here to actually approve, and you can ask questions about, you know, what's the emergency or...
Okay.
So there is, there are some safeguards. It's not just, you know, geez, I don't feel like coming in, so I don't want to phone in. You've got to have one of these reasons, and then it can be rejected by the board if you feel appropriate.
Okay. I just have a strong feeling that we all knew the schedule when we put our names on the ballot, and I think that the people of the village of Peoria Heights expect us at these meetings. So as I said before, I don't oppose the reduction of the meetings from three to two, but I'm very strongly opposed to members being able to attend remotely and then also cast votes without looking the people in the eye when they're casting votes. I mean, theoretically, this ordinance would allow this governing body to raise taxes without the people sitting here looking the people in the eye, and something about that does not seem right to me. So in that regard, I oppose this ordinance.
Well, a motion to amend is in order at any time before we vote on the main question, so if you'd like to make an amendment, I'm open to it. Anyone else?
Trustee Weisenberg, do you want to make an amendment?
Yeah, I'm going to.
I have a question. Is there a way that if we adopt this, we can set it to be, like, reviewed every year? That we have some things like that? Because I think part of the trustee Weisenberg, what I'm hearing you say, part of it is that it's not that you feel like it's being taken advantage of at this moment, but that potentially in 10 years, it could be.
Correct.
But if it was set to review every year, then that would be some way to make sure that it's being...
You mean the ordinance?
Yeah.
I'm going to let counsel answer that, but we could change anything at any time. We don't even have to wait for the review. Six months from now, we could...
That's exactly right. You can adopt this ordinance at this meeting and repeal it at the next. What you can't do is say, you know, this has to be reviewed, this has to be, you know, you can't bind a future board to take any particular action.
Okay.
So, but no, just like any other ordinance, other than when we're actually spending money, you know, committing to a project and signing a contract or something like that, anything procedural like this can always be changed at any time.
Okay.
Assuming the majority supports it.
Well, of course. It would have to be actually voted and approved appropriately.
And when I make this comment, I just want the public to know and my fellow board members and village government to know that each and every one of you, I trust completely. But I have a huge issue with trusting government to govern itself, and I think if we make this change, it's never going to get changed back. I think if it does at some point become abused, well, then you have those board members who are abusing it that aren't necessarily going to vote against their interests. So I just think it sets a really bad precedent, so I appreciate the opportunity to hear these grievances.
Well, I'm waiting for the amendment.
I move, can I move?
Yes.
I move to amend ordinance 2022-1673, removing the ability of remote members to cast votes without being present to answer for or to the citizens of Peoria Heights.
All right, I want to make sure I understand that because you said cast votes. Are you saying they can participate but not vote, or...
Yeah.
I think it's an all-or-nothing proposition. I'm not certain that we can allow participation but not allow voting. So it's either strike Section 2 from the proposed ordinance.
You're sure, I don't, you're certain of that?
I will look into that. I've never seen a community do that, but I don't believe, if a member is deemed to be present at the meeting, I don't think you can restrict their right to vote.
Can I make a comment, Mayor? One I respect, trustee Weisenberg's stance and understand it. I want to give you a little bit of background of why this provision was put in this ordinance, and it was more of a courtesy to the board. Over the last year, everybody sitting up here has had to miss meetings because of work, and I thought that this would, instead of missing the meeting outright, this would give them some options to call in, and I thought that would be better than just missing the meeting. Now, using that rule of thumb, I think it would be a moot point because if they're not voting, then might as well just miss the meeting then. I think my, the idea behind, you know, my provisions of the ordinance was it'd be an option for the board members because we do know how much this board travels for business. And I think the sticking point is what the mayor just said as far as abusing it. I think, you know, with this board, as trustee Weisenberg said, boards change, mayors change, administrators change. I, you know, I can't speak for that, but I do know as far as who we have sitting up here. I do not expect this to be abused at all, and I was just looking at, for those people that do travel, and that covers everybody up here, that they would have at least an option not to miss the meeting because we do want everybody's participation. So just a little bit of background of why that was added in there, so, yeah.
Okay, I agree with trustee Weisenberg because we can't put this on here. We don't know about the boards later on down the road. You know, everybody else here doesn't abuse it, but if you set this precedent somewhere down the road, somebody might abuse it. So I agree with him that we should probably take that part out. I don't have a problem cutting the medias down and changing the times, but...
Okay, so is that a second?
Well, hold on, I need to make a motion because I couldn't.
I'm confident that if somebody is present at the meeting, you cannot restrict their right to vote.
So because I made that motion, I need to make a new motion now?
No one seconded it.
Oh, no one seconded it?
Yeah.
Okay, make a new motion, okay. And just before I make the second motion, I think we have an all-star team, no doubt about it whatsoever. I move to amend ordinance 2022-1673, striking Section 2.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Now discussion on the amendment only.
Striking Section 2 would remove the ability to...
Participate.
Attend meetings remotely.
Right. Any discussion?
But just as a clarification of, once the pandemic is over, and I'm hopeful that that will be soon, but we don't know for sure, so just that.
Yeah, that's...
What I call a pandemic amendment to the OMA is still in effect because the governor has still declared, doesn't ask...
Correct.
I understand, and I second the part about the pandemic.
Okay. Not hearing any comment. Madam Clerk, call the roll on the amendment.
Trustee DeVore?
Nay.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Nay.
Trustee Wigington?
Nay.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
That was three to two, Mayor.
Opposed, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk, for helping me out on that. So the amendment does fail. Back to the main amendment. Is there anything else on the main motion? I'm sorry. Is there any other comment on the main motion? Trustee Weisenberg, I would say, I don't disagree with you. I think you make good points, but again, I don't think it would work unless we had the people around this table, and if I'm sitting here, I'm not going to permit, I hate to use the term slackers, I'm not going to permit people to abuse this because I'll be bringing something back to you, and I think Chief Sutton would as well. So I understand your argument, but I promise you, we won't let that happen.
Not a problem. No hard feelings.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Wigington?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
No.
All right, that does pass. The main motion passes. So we would be at the award of MFT seal coating contract to R.A. Cullen and Sons in the amount of $174,799.38. Trustee Marfel is absent. Could I get someone else to make a motion to approve, please?
Sure. I move to approve MFT seal coating contract to R.A. Cullen and Sons in the amount of $1,074,99.38.
Thank you. In a second.
Second.
All right. Dustin, or Chris, you want to set this up?
Yeah, so every year, we do seal coating program for certain sections of the village.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
We, I believe, opened three bids for this, and R.A. Cullenan, who has worked with us many times in the past, came in with a low bid, and they do excellent work, and they're a good outfit to go with, for sure.
Any questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Wigington?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
That passes, and please excuse me, I skipped over one because I had asked for a motion to defer. I missed the previous one, the approval of ordinance 2022-1674, an ordinance amending Title VIII, Chapter 2A, Section 10 of the Village Code of the Village of Peoria Heights for the purpose of setting minimum per-unit water rates for single-metered family, multifamily residential apartment buildings. And I'm going to ask for a motion to defer this because both chief and I talked, and we're in the middle of the consultant's study, so please add on to that.
That's correct, Mayor. This is an ordinance that we will have to revise eventually, but I think it's a little bit premature with the consultant doing their work. I think that we'll do this all at the same time. Hopefully, in the fall, we get an administrative summary, but it is something that we need to address. But again, I think if we did it now, it'd be something we would be reviewing again in, you know, four or five months to change, so I think, again, we will table it and discuss it in the near future.
So I would ask for a motion to defer this until we approve the findings of the water consultant. Is that okay with you, counsel?
Absolutely.
Okay. Do you have that motion?
To defer.
Thank you, trustee Gett. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the deferral? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Wigington?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. We would be at award of MFT spray patching contract to DND Pavement Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $45,188.66. I would ask for a motion to approve this.
I make a motion to approve the award of the MFT spray patching contract.
All right, thank you. In a second.
Second.
Okay, Chris, it's all yours again.
Yeah, so once again, yearly, we do this, and this goes right along with the seal coating. They come along beforehand and do spray patching of particular areas that need extra work to get them prepared for the seal coating, and I believe we opened two contracts for this one, and this was the low bidder, and good to go on that one as well.
I don't recall this company. Have we used them before?
I believe, I'm not sure if we've used them before, but I believe this was a split off of the company that we've used in the past.
Okay.
Yes, I believe we actually used them last year. It was their first year.
Right.
Thank you. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Wigington?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
That passes. All right. We would be at approval of resolution rebuild funds in the amount of $31,705 for design engineering for Forest Park Drive Mill and Overlay. I would ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
In a second.
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 Thank you. Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, so this is the Forest Park Drive. Every once in a while, well, it's lasted about 20 years, I believe, it needs to be overlaid, which means all the blacktop from curb to curb, not messing with the curbs, milling it, and new blacktop all the way down, obviously painting and striping, and that needs to be engineered, and I believe this is the contract or initial stages of that project for next year.
Okay. Questions? Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Wigington?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
That passes. All right, we would be at miscellaneous business. Mr. Aldrich, I know you have some updates for the board. Would you go ahead, please?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things related to the Prospect Road improvements. So I think, you know, a couple weeks ago, we submitted an application for congressionally directed spending through Senator Durbin's office. For lack of a better term, that's the old-fashioned earmark spending. So those are back, and as of the last couple of years, earmarks have been back. So we did submit for Prospect Road, the same application, as you recall, we submitted in January through the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity for $2 million for Phase 1 engineering for Prospect Road. Tomorrow, we expect to submit an application on the House side. They call it the MND project, I mean, on the House side, but it's really the same program. And again, we submitted the same amount for Phase 1 engineering now. Of course, the Senate and the House get together, and they're not going to give you awards for both projects, but they both know that we'll be submitting for the same amount for Prospect Road. We still anticipate... We still anticipate an announcement from VCO for the application of excitement in January. They said originally April, so that could come down any time. So fingers crossed that we did submit that.
That's a housing grant, correct, Wayne?
No, it's the rebuild...
Oh, the re, all right. The housing grant should be coming soon. Would you notice on that?
Yes. And then, of course, the MTEC grant, the Healthy Homes Grant, that was awarded pretty earlier in the year. Still be with HUD on that, trying to get that program going, but we have had initial negotiations meetings with HUD for that program as well. The other project for updates is the Together We Play Park project. So right now, working on a request for proposals for contractors to do that project. And it's something that probably involves a little bit of design and then some contracting and then providing the equipment. So right now, we'll set up as an RFP for kind of design build services on that project. Still have to check with a few vendors to see, you know, that setup or that type of RFP they can respond to. So as soon as we do that, we'll issue an RFP for that. Unless something changes and they say, well, there's no way I can respond to that type of project, we'll have to pursue a different type of solicitation. Right now, it's set up for an RFP to get both design and build services for that project. Anticipate, you know, unless there's material supply issues, we'll ask for a schedule. Anticipate that can be done this year.
Any questions? All right, I know, Dustin, you have an update as well?
I do, Mayor. After our last board meeting, I did reach out to American Water and shared their concerns the board had regarding the closure of the trail and the rerouting of traffic. Had a really nice conversation with Eric Larson. He told him that he would reach out with his team to see what they would do. And I did receive a phone call today, and they're going to delay the project until the fall so the heights is not impacted as much, so I'm very happy with that. So I do want to thank Eric for his work on that. So I think, other than, I think we kind of went through all the options last meeting, and there really wasn't a good one for the village, and I kind of conveyed that to him, and he understood. So I want to thank them for their work in moving this to the fall, so.
Well, I want to thank you greatly, and also please extend my sincere appreciation to Eric and everyone at Illinois American. I know I publicly expressed some frustration with him at the last meeting, and I really appreciate their understanding of the predicament this would put us in and their willingness to postpone construction until a more favorable time for the trail users in the village. So thanks very much.
I would like to add a quick update on that. They are currently working on Marietta. They are almost done with the two blocks of Marietta and getting ready to head north on Monroe. And I know there's been some concerns about the street, but it is a construction project, and they should be sealing that street up pretty soon. But they're moving along pretty good.
Thank you, Chris.
Sure.
When they're done, they'll re-blacktop it and all that, and they'll just rock it?
They will, yes. Yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
Saturday, the fire department's going to be at Silver Lake in Prospect for the Volunteer Fire Association, collecting money.
All right, good. Hope you collect a lot. Anyone else under miscellaneous? All right, we would be at payment of the bills. I would ask for a motion to pay the bills.
I make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions on any of the bills? Or any discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk?
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Wigington?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next, we'd be at the treasurer's report.
As of the end of March, in the village-controlled accounts, there was $5,684,861.35. In the water-controlled accounts, there was $1,813,449.29.
All right, you heard the treasurer's report. I would ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Any question on the report? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Wigington?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Trustee Gett, would ask for a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? For adjourn.